Yes.
Okay. I'd like to call to order the October 12. Meeting of the Isle of Palms Planning Commission and acknowledge that the the press and public have been notified in accordance with state law. Uh, the first item on our agenda is the approval of our minutes from our August 10 meeting. Do we have any motions?
Submit they be approved as written?
Yeah, we have, we have a motion and a second and any conversation in the comments. Take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, off to the old business, uh, transportation resiliency all element of our comprehensive plan and.
Is that old business?
It's old business. Well, the comprehensive.
Well, comprehensive.
Comprehensive plan update. It's been long.
Right.
Yeah. So do we ask for Douglas? Did we ask for Matt yet? Well, so we'll, we'll kind of, we'll go back and forth a bit and, and just for um, clarity, this is not the transportation resiliency. It is just the resiliency element.
Isn't that under FEMA?
What's that?
The resiliency element.
Um. No, it's so to talk about the resiliency element, that is, um, since the last time the comprehensive plan was done, the state legislature has changed the law requiring what comprehensive plans have to include. And this is a new element, so this will be the first time this element is in the comprehensive plan. We talked a little bit about whether we incorporate it into um, the natural resources section, but after looking at the, the statute, we determined it would be best to pull it out and have it as its own elements. That's what, that's how we have it drafted today. But I will say that um, what you're looking at is parts of it have been pulled out of other sections of the comprehensive plan, so and you, what was in your packet is not um, you don't have the benefit of seeing where, when it was moved out of a section, it obviously got deleted in the section that it was in. Um, and, and put into this section because it kind of touches on a lot of different existing parts that were in the plan, so it's, it's a little bit of patchwork of putting, uh, taking other elements out, putting them in here, trying to stitch it together. Um. Flooding specifically was in the natural um, resources section. Beach and, and um, the subheading beach was in the natural resources section. And there is still a section there, but specifically in the resilience uh, element, it is now ta- titled beach erosion because we're talking about the issues, you know, the, the more of the challenges of the beach as opposed to, to its benefits, which we thought was appropriate to leave in the natural um, resources section. Sea level rise, that's an entirely new um, component of the comp plan. Um, so that one we, you know, we thought was probably when you look at the issues and the resiliency uh, issues facing the city is going to be facing in the future, that's probably uh, one of the key ones that we'll be looking at. And the existing conditions, the kind of preamble there and the existing conditions, that's, that's all brand new to the, to the plan. Um. And so, yes, I think to Suzanne's point, a lot of, a lot of components here are tied to, I mean, that's what FEMA, that's what they're trying, what really what they've been pushing for cities to become more resilient through their flood um, programs that we've always, we've participated for many years in. Um, so they are tied into it, but, but really the, the section is being added because of the change in the state law governing how comp plans are written. So this is kind of a first pass. We still have, and I think kind of things that we wanted to discuss. Um, first of all, just the first pass that they're glaring omissions. Secondly, we have not really written the goals and strategies. We didn't want to keep going down a rabbit hole if we were in the wrong area, so we wanted to kind of just give some bullets of what we thought would be included in the goals and strategies. So wanted to talk a little bit uh, about that. And then I guess kind of um, procedurally, this, wanted to talk about the fact that in this current year's budget, the city has uh, included in that budget doing a sea rise adaptation plan, I think is what the, the term is. The staff, I think, has kind of had a goal of getting this updated and out the door. You know, I, I was hoping by the end of the year, this would be out of the planning commission and into council's hands. Um, but if I could also see a um, a method where we pause, do the sea rise uh, adaptation plan, kind of similar to what we did with transportation. Pause, engage a professional, uh, work with that professional and then flush that out, flush really this whole element and probably our strategies out a little bit more. So those are kind of the three things that we were hoping to talk to you about, just generally how you felt about the kind of. And there, there's a lot of, there's a challenge in trying to fit the right level of detail uh, into this element, you know, when you look at our transportation element, it's kind of whatever, three, four pages, two pages of strategies. Uh, when you look at some communities' resiliency element, that element is fifteen, twenty pages, and I think we felt like that would be, you know, would be kind of indicating that this is a bigger issue for the island than say transportation, which I would, in my personal opinion, they're kind of on equal footing, so we didn't want to put too much, we also didn't want to put too little, so we've tried to strike that balance of being uh, the right level of detail for this plan. So that's a lot at once to kind of put at you, but those are um, and, and I don't know if you want to take the questions one at a time, but I think the first question that we have is, do you feel like generally uh, these topics and this level of detail hits the mark? Are there omissions? I think that's kind of question one for us. Sandy?
Pullback, pullback in the back row. Question, um, do we, did I hear you say that we might have the option of approving everything that we've done up until now and putting it forward? And then pulling this out, the resiliency topic out and working on it and then submitting it after the fact?
Well, I think you're gonna, I think you would do one of two routes. Either you would pause and do engage a professional and then kind of pick it back up. And then, and then after you've picked it back up with the insight of a professional, then push it on. Or complete it and, and we're actually very close. Um, I think we've been through every element. There's going to be some kind of just editorial reviews. You, you haven't really looked at it in its entirety. You've been piecemealing element by element. So you would just kind of push it out the door as an updated, and again, um, you all are charged with reviewing it every five years. You've done that review, you're, you're charged with updating it every ten years. It's only been five years since you've updated it. Now it's knocking on the door of six. Um. So you're still well, you're still well ahead of schedule for updating it, but like everything, you know, after five years, it, there's a lot of kind of updating that's necessary, so, so you will have pivoted into kind of update mode. But there would not be a problem either way. Either you would have it in there with a strategy of um, you know, short, quickly doing an adaptation plan. And it would just be in there as a, as a strategy and a goal. And then we could, we could start on that early next year. Um, or you could pause it, do that work, and then push it forward, say, six months from now. Either one, I think, is fine. For whatever reason, like maybe it's just for the sake of having things kind of on the completed shelf. I think my personal preference would be that you not pause. I mean, I feel like it's been lingering already. I think it's been over a year that we've been working on it. So there's a part of me that would like to just get it done and completed, but I could easily, if you all would rather do it another way, I'm certainly agreeable to that.
I, I think getting it, seeing this for the first time, we're putting it into the plan, getting it done and getting it on the record is a good stop. I don't think stopping now and hiring a professional and delaying this more months gets us there. But I think when I read through this, I, I'd like to see a little better introduction of the, of what the issue is going to be. To just generically say sea level rise is, is one thing, and, and the one table you put in here, or the one figure you put in here is, you know, it, it, yeah, Charleston's going to have more flooding days, everyone knows that. Actually, we're kind of, it's kind of getting old hearing that.
Right.
I think there's better data we can put in there that says, here's what's going to happen on Isle of Palms. If you look at the study I sent you, there's some very real data in here that says, based on sea level rise, we're going to have two thousand more acres flooded on Isle of Palms. We're going to have twenty-six million dollars in damages. So I think I would rather start introducing those and then say, now we need to put a plan together, start addressing these. Just that, I think the one graph and, and the, and the data that's in here is, we can do more than that.
So specifically sea level rise? I mean, is that, so there, you, you feel that kind of about? So we have existing conditions flooding generally. I mean, you kind of have um, when it rains.
I think, I think surge and sea level rise is, is probably into a bucket unto itself. That's true.
Beach erosion, they're all somewhat.
They're all somewhat related, and, and actually, if, if you, in the report I just talked about, they actually lay all of those out in a table that's very good and says, here's what's going to happen on Isle of Palms for environmental and cultural and economic resources in, in damage to infrastructure. So all of those can be laid out and says, here's what we need to address, are these four or five different things. Sea level rise and surge is one of those. Um, damage to resources around, damage to infrastructure is another, of, of current infrastructure and future infrastructure. So I, I don't think we need to give the answers now, but I think just to say, gee, we all know sea level's going to rise and Charleston's going to get flooded more, kind of doesn't play enough for the subject of what it is. Everyone hears that way too much. We're all, you know, we're all numb of hearing that. But there's a real impact on Isle of Palms that if in fact sea level rise over the next few decades means two thousand more acres is going to be flooded, well, Isle of Palms is only four thousand acres. The whole island. So what does that mean? That's all I'm saying. I, I would rather get a better introduction to the subject. We don't have to answer all that now. We don't need to hire the professional now. But I think we need to, to better state what the issues are going to be.
I agree.
There'll be some homes that'll have to have um, driveways that'll sustain load twice a day.
All of those, I guess there's going to be lots of things, and, and like I said, even, even when you look at some of the reports, and they're starting to be at many more better reports out, I think there's many better reports out there right now. In, in many ways Isle of Palm gets short shrift because we're so small, because we have a short population, because we have, you know, if, if you, if you look at the, the risks and the problems in the Charleston area, we fall off the thing as being, well, that's relatively low risk, you know, it's only going to affect four thousand people. That doesn't mean it's not a very real issue to the four thousand people on this island. So I think we need to get a better discussion of what the future issues are going to be. And I think that one report I sent you guys in the back twenty or thirty pages does a very good job of saying, here's the four or five or six things. And they actually have a very nice table that kind of lays them out. That says, you know, Isle of Palm is one of the eighty high-risk areas in South Carolina. Here's what you can expect to see start, starting to happen.
So, go ahead, Mark. I, I guess before we get off that, do you, so there are a lot of good reports out there about sea level rise. I mean, there's, and, and a lot of cities, it's now, uh, it's being done by most cities and um, and I think we know that there will be a sea level rise study done, and it'll be one of the uh, at least one of the goals in our plan. If not incorporated into the plan, we'll talk about that, but um, back to the kind of fitting it in, are you, are you thinking, and I didn't, I didn't study what you forwarded, I thi-
I didn't intend you to. It's five, three hundred fifty-five pages.
And, and, but I guess I wondered, can that, and you're kind of, you're obviously familiar with the the level of detail in our plan and the level of detail in that plan, could it be, could the two be meshed together in a way that you're not kind of making the resiliency element half the plan?
Absolutely. I'm not saying we need to have fifteen pages, but what I'm saying is
Take out a few.
One or two better paragraphs and two or three better figures is we get the message across a little better, in my opinion.
Okay, good.
Right, yeah, no, I'm, I'm not saying it should be, because we don't know enough to, to have, to have a dominate the plan yet.
Yeah.
But I think we need to do a better job introducing it.
Okay.
Good.
Could it be a separate plan?
I think ultimately it has.
It will, well.
Yeah. I mean.
I think that's going to be part of one of our strategies, is we will have a separate plan.
Correct.
And I guess the initial question was, do you want to have that separate plan so it gets worked into this bigger plan? I think maybe we're, I don't know that we're agreeing, but maybe the other way would be, we do this update, we get the plan done, when this gets reviewed and updated again, you know, we would have that plan to pull from and incorporate it into the comp plan. It could be done either way.
I just see the resilience plan as becoming a monster on its own.
Absolutely.
I mean, something that would probably be even more scrutinized than
Right.
the comp plan.
Sorry, I, I, I'm kind of, I was kind of for, you know, get this finished and, and where we are now, I think we're aware that sea level rise is going to be an issue. We don't necessarily know what those issues are until we have the study done. That's our first step. So I don't want to say a lot of things in our, our current plan that we don't know if they're true or not, because there are a lot of studies out there and they differ. And I, I don't think there's a denial that we have that sea level is rising, and we know it's going to cause flooding issues. We don't know the extent of that, because I don't think there's been, that's part of the study that we want to happen is, okay, specifically for us, what, what will be the effects of it? And what should we do about it? We, until we get that study, we really don't know. So I don't want to put things in our comprehensive plan at this time until we know what they are. So I think the fact of just being more general in the, you know, sea level rise is a concern. We don't need to be quoting studies that we don't, haven't had a chance to look at. Um, but just, you know, it's a concern, and our first step is to get somebody to come in and, and
Study it.
do the study for us and tell us which studies pertain to us. Um, that was when, when I read through this, I, I put a big question mark when, on my notes, a hundred and eighty, um, Charleston was a hundred and eighty days flooding. I actually went back, figured, I found out where that came from, I think. It was a coastal study done in twenty fifteen. They've, um, they've updated that study now to say sixty days by twenty fifty. So again, it's, it's all over the place and we don't know what's fact, so I don't think we should be putting a lot of things in there until we have somebody to kind of give us that background of what reports and what, how they will affect us. So I think at this point in time, just saying it is a major concern and our first step is to do a study.
My, my only comment, and I'm, I don't mean to interrupt other people, but this, this is not some one-off study. This is, this is probably the most comprehensive study done by Army Corps of Engineers, NOAA, FEMA, EPA, National Park Service, um, uh, National Fish and Wildlife Service. This is probably the most comprehensive one of everything pulled together. Now, I'm not saying it's a hundred percent accurate.
Right.
And they don't have all the solutions, but they're introducing the issues. They're saying, here's what we, you think we can expect. So I'm not disagreeing with you, but I, I think not to, to say that, to base on the fact that Charleston's a unique situation, we all know it's going to flood, doesn't, doesn't bring it home to what's going to start happening on this island, and that's what I would like to find some way to do.
So, so to just back up to Stephen's point, I think that's a, you know, I think that's a great point, and I think that, I guess from a I don't, I would assume, and I, and I guess I shouldn't assume, but would anybody object to, I guess, the first pass? The staff working with Stephen to just pull out those key kind of indicators that you're saying could, could potentially make into one, two, three paragraphs? Inserting those in?
I'll be glad to do that, and I'll, I'll, I'll forward this on to everybody. It's a PDF that everyone can take a look at. It's a well-published.
Yeah, and I've just sent it.
You've sent it to everybody.
I've sent it to.
I think it's worth going through, and I, I'm agreeing. I'm not saying we should make this as gospel, but it's, it's a pretty comprehensive study.
Yes.
I, I agree with what's, you know, I agree with, with all the points that have been made, but I, I do agree with David about the validation piece, so whatever we do, I think, can we caveat it? With just a statement at the beginning of the element that says,
We don't know.
we're going to engage a professional.
Oh.
And we'll have more information on this and, you know.
But I still think you can set the ground rules, the, the basic building.
We're talking about outlining it, right?
Yeah.
We're essentially talking.
I think either way, we're kind of outlining there's an issue. We'll study the, we'll study the kind of gravity and severity of it. I, and it seems to me that each of these that you read, they are giving a wide range of possibilities. It's, you know, I think they're all acknowledging that you're guessing what, what the level's going to be over time. And, and nobody can say, we know exactly what it will be on that year. And it's all a guess. So I think, no matter what, there's going to be some kind of explanation upfront that this is based on guesses. But all of them are agreeing there's going to be some impact. Yes, some, well. So that, that was why I was staying, trying to stay away from kind of the uh, calling sky thing. It just, you know, we know it's.
The thing that triggered me down, the thing that triggered me down that path is probably, this is probably the least representative chart you should put in is what's going to happen downtown Charleston. That's not what's going to happen on Isle of Palms. So that, that's what triggered me saying, there's got to be better data we can put in here than that particular charting, but that's what started me down this path. And I think there is.
So I, well, just looking at the topography of, and, you know, watching sea level rises for drainage projects, we do have the same, you know, the city of Charleston roads go underwater at five and a half foot tides, our roads go underwater at five and a half. So I don't know that I would agree that.
We have parts of the island that have, have similar problems, but, but the, to, to look at Charleston as being at the elevation of sea level, above sea level and, and a subsidence level that needs a, a seawall built around it is very different than what we're looking at here.
Well, I think we're at the same, we're at the same levels. We got the same harbor.
The same water.
And that's not.
Five or ten minutes difference.
We're a little more dynamic than Charleston, though. We are a barrier island. Going to.
Be worse.
It's going to be worse, but you're going to have, it'll be this end and then this end and then here and then there. So, you know, what works for Charleston won't really work for us.
Chart-wise, I think it does, but solution-wise, I think you're correct. I don't think we can build a wall around the Isle of Palm. However, we can uh, consider some, some uh, some things. I looked at this list of key issues, and I think there's some things that need to be added to it. Such as lower, lower lying structures that will be inundated at some point in the near future for that chart. Um, the road systems you talked about that are underwater, those aren't listed here, is, is something that we, you know, in the future need to consider.
What being underwater?
Roads.
Oh.
Roads.
Identifying low, so low structures and roads.
Yeah.
That would tie into the transportation aspect as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um. I mean, I think, I think we can sit here and kind of brainstorm some of this and come up with some some other things to add to it. I don't think that uh, we have the solutions without some, some engineering assistance for what can be done. It says, build dunes, um, I don't know the practicality of that. Uh, sure, we can build dunes. Um, is that the answer? Uh, or, or is a seawall the answer? So, you know, we can seal titles, can else, we're doing some of that, aren't we? With this drainage plant, the point gates.
We're kind of, you know, we're starting with three.
Yeah.
Three different outfalls, three major and lowest.
I mean, support re-nourishment of, of what? I assume that's dunes.
Yeah, beach, beach re-nourishment.
Health, the disaster recovery account.
So what went into, what was the genesis of the piece that you wrote? I haven't read, I haven't read it yet. It's three or four pages, but, so you're trying to satisfy the minimum requirement from the state, correct?
Yes, so.
Did you pull from other, what other?
We pulled out of, right out of Matt's brain.
Okay, so you pulled from other planes that were.
Right. It's really the organization of it.
Gotcha.
Did those communities create their own comprehensive plan, or have they gone through like uh, council of governments to have them formulate their? I will, you know, I.
Sullivan put the route of what you presented originally, having someone come in and engage a professional. If Valley did their own, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, they all, I will say that they all seem to be more, I mean, they all have the appearance, all the ones that I've seen have the appearance of being an outsourced document. I'll say there's benefits, the polish, I think, is, is a higher level of polish and graphics and but quite frankly, reading it, you can kind of tell that it was somewhat boilerplate, like this satisfies, so when I read ours, you can actually kind of tell that it's, it's a thoughtful uh, you know, product of the community and not just kind of a, a hired consultant, so I think that they all, all that we looked at were pretty polished and.
Yeah.
So I, you know, I guess this tact would be this remains as again, kind of the format and the length of matching the other elements of the comprehensive plan, knowing that there will be a more polished plan to come, kind of uh, similar to how we deal with, you know, right now, we're doing a drainage master plan. Hired out, being highly studied. Uh, the product's going to be highly polished. But when you look at this, I mean, it's just kind of in there as a, a working document. Any other, I, I may have cut you off, Sandy. Is, did you, I think those were good, um. Any other comments in terms of identifying key issues or goals and strategies? Yeah, I kind of questioned like the, the build dunes was kind of the same, I was kind of think of uh, wrote, wrote down, maintain and protect dunes. Or even extend dunes. I'm not sure build was just hit me as kind of a. Like a very aggressive approach. Mechanical, kind of pull the bulldozers up on the. Right.
It used to be, we just donated our own Christmas tree.
Yeah.
And, and anything to create the dune, and, you know, the dunes are temporary stopgap against flooding from storm. You know, our, our beach right now, the elevation of the, of our beach is high. Um, I live on Forty Second when I bought my property twenty-five years ago. There was a stone uh, growing in that area.
Still there.
It's still there, but you can't find it.
Yeah, find it.
You know, it used to be at low tide, there it was, people would be hanging out playing on it.
Yeah.
So it's still there.
I tried to run for.
I got it. Oh, exactly. And so, I mean, we have that by virtue of our beach re-nourishment down upstream, whichever. Um, it, it's created a wider stretch beach and a taller stretch beach, but we know that's not permanent because of a good storm, and I guess the last really, really good storm we had, um, well, no.
Since an oxymoron.
I, I just remember one of our local uh, residents was trying to uh, surf the hurricane that was coming. Wasn't too smart. And, and, you know, you could see the waves washing up against the dune. And it made me really uh, question construction methodologies, you know, solid block, masonry, walls versus piers. But um, you know, that was the end of the storm. And so the dunes, you know, up on Ocean Boulevard, there were some dunes that got depleted, some uh, walkovers that had washed away and, and, you know, that's kind of what happened. You know, do you really rebuild that dune with bulldozers? I don't know if that's really.
I think we did.
I think they probably did.
Yeah, we did on that ocean, kind of on this end, it, it did take
Right.
physical kind of construction down there.
I think it was after Irma, because I remember, is that right? They started at low tide
Yeah.
to get the quick and dirty permit to push.
Yeah.
And build dunes. There's, they're still there, but not.
Yeah. But in time, they'll build back and propose.
It's the nature of sand.
Yeah.
So, um, I like most of what's written here. Um, I think that um, the one question I had is will work of mine, what does resiliency mean? Should there be a definition?
Well, that, we kind of started with that exact question because, and actually other plans talked about things, and I can't remember who it was that went on about. I mean, they were really talking about in their, they got, they talked about natural resiliency to things like storm surges. Uh, but then their plan, they went into economic resiliency, you know, and it went into things like putting money into your downtown to invest and, you know, ensure that you have revenues, revenue streams coming back and that type of stuff. But we look, we. But we look, we started really at the statute, the, the statute that is requiring us to do that, to do this element. And it was very much aimed at the natural resiliency that you kind of think of. So it was talking about low lying areas, um, you know, planning for, for, uh, storm surges, preparing for storms, quick recovery after storms. So it was.
Basically water trouble.
Yeah. I think, I think it was talking about water trouble specifically for us, you know, I think others, I don't know if other places have fire, you know, wildfire type things and, um, that could become more challenging. Any, any other natural, I mean, in that element?
It only says the effects of sea level rise and flooding.
Yeah.
Municipalities.
You're not within.
Sorry, I forgot. Economic development, all those things. So.
It did not mention economic development.
I don't believe so. Yeah.
What, excuse me, what is an elevated berm on the backside of the island? What does that mean?
So that is, we, we are, um. We have a multi-use path on, along Waterway Boulevard. And this is the city's kind of scaled back version of the downtown project, the, the low battery wall that's being rebuilt along the battery. It's a similar concept where the city was planning to just repave that berm, that, I'm sorry, that path. And the thought came up of what if you, in the low parts of that path, what if you brought those low posts, parts up to create a continuous elevation, a berm basically at a continuous elevation such that a storm surge could not get any farther than Waterway Boulevard. It's still a very low, I think, I think the elevation, it's either six or seven feet. So a massive hurricane would still go over it. Uh, but it would not do what it currently does where it goes over, um, at two or three different spots. I think one is like 32nd, one is maybe 40, 40th, where it can act, high tide can actually go across those golf courses and into those neighborhoods across Waterway Boulevard. So with this berm, high tide would come up, go across the water, the, the golf courses and stop at a berm. And then, and then it would recede down.
So you're trying to reconstruct levees like they did in New Orleans before Katrina.
So this is a very low level form, yes, of what is, is done in New Orleans where it's kind of got a ring wall around it that stops those surges.
Yeah, which didn't help.
Yeah. And obviously the complications getting the water so back out. So it's not.
But this addresses like the king tides.
Yeah.
As opposed to storms.
King tides and minor, you know, things like whatever it was, Matthew, Irma, Joaquin. And some of those, it came through the golf course up 41st and got into those, into those neighborhoods. So this would stop very low level flooding like that. But that's, that's I guess an example of. Um, when you have a project, you're going to repave the entirety of a path along the backside of the island. You know, put into your mind, the concept of adding some less expensive berm material to elevate it a bit to get some cheap cover, I guess, for lack of a better term. It'll, it'll give us some keep, cheap cover. It's not going to do much or anything in a major hurricane, but, uh, minor storms, it could provide some benefit.
So you're addressing to some extent, armory and road system with that.
To a very low level, I would say, yeah.
The other question I had is, are there multiple people hiring multiple consultants to do the same jobs in the city?
No. I don't know if that was a trick question, but. Uh, was not a trick?
No.
No, they're.
I just, I keep seeing things like applying for grants, hiring consultants, and I just wonder if we're all doing addressing the same issues, but through a different pathway.
No, that is all, I mean, that's all being handled just by the city. Now.
Davis and Floyd has, has been awarded a contract that's doing the, the, uh, yeoman's work with the.
Change map.
Drainage, which somewhat is being, is, is touching on the fringes of what we're talking about right now. And I believe the flood, flooding conditions at 30th Avenue, um, where there is some road, uh, flooding, the flooding that we've talked about along Waterway Boulevard.
And at Jeffrey's point, that was done by Thomas and Hutton. So maybe, maybe that's the example of.
Yeah. Well, what are Davis and Floyd doing?
So maybe we are hiring multiple, no, in that situation, Thomas and Hutton did the actual design of the structures. Uh, Davis and Floyd is doing very high level kind of identifying the projects. They are not designing, you know, they're not creating construction documents for each of the projects they identify at this point.
Did we not task one of those two companies also to give us a recommendation for maintaining?
Yes. Yeah. That's Davis and Floyd. Yeah. Thomas and Hutton, I was being kind of tongue in cheek. Thomas and Hutton did the, the actual construction documents for the three outfalls that are under construction now. And I guess to go back to, to go back to the point, I mean, there, there are a lot of, there's, the city has a grant writer. You know, and that grant writer is out pursuing money for the city. The Water and Sewer Commission has a separate grant writer. They are going out for, um, they're going out for grants for other projects. So there, I guess there is a lot of kind of similar work happening among various factions, but we're, we're coordinating that. We're not asking for the same money for the same project, um, at, at any point, but there, there are a lot of consultants doing a lot of work.
Yeah. Army Corps of Engineers has helped out. I know they help areas in California with this routinely. And the study that you pulled up involves Army Corps and that's who we requested years ago to help with the beach re nourishment when there was no beach. Uh, I mean, it may be a resource to try to go after it. Cause I'm sure they show barrier island issues on their studies.
Well, they were the prime author of that study I'm referring to, and they identified all those issues. But then they only went two levels into it. They took the high risk and the medium high risk and then formulated risk assessments and plans. Most Isle of Palms and everything in Isle of Palms fell into a lower category. So they weren't addressing those. They, they said, let's look at the Charleston area and let's identify the five or 10 top ones that have the biggest economic, financial outcomes doesn't meet any of those.
When they're doing their studies, it should show Isle of Palms.
It's all, it's all in there. It's all, if you got the email, it's all in there in detail.
But I mean, I guess that, that might lead to just a goal or, or a strategy rather, that we do leverage any kind of partnerships that we can, um. Kind of makes sense. And I, and I know that that's in other parts of the plan, but this certainly seems like, you know, the grants we're asking for, uh, one is from, one is from FEMA, one's from the federal government, one's from the state government. So. I think that's a, that's a logical, uh, strategy is to just try to achieve as much as we can through partnerships.
Free partnership.
Yeah. I'm going to make that a strategy somewhere. And the, and the, the city's break wall I know is heavily backed. I think the entire plan was done by the Army Corps. Um, and I know that there's a match that the city is working on, but that a huge component of the finances is also proposed to be through the Army Corps. That's a good, good point. Any other, I think that's, that's great feedback. I, if, um. I think I'm kind of seeing general head nods. I think we have Stephen can help with maybe the tenor of the introduction. Pull some key charts out, help in that regard. We will take some of these comments. Continue to work flushing out the key issues, uh, goals and strategies, which we haven't really done much with. Um. Any other, any other kind of? Input on that?
So, so the process then is to pause for a moment, try to shake it up a little, but not pause for the long term to engage anything.
I think that's what I'm here.
Rather to put a mark on it now and then to begin.
I think that's what I'm here. Is it, if that's agreeable to everybody, is that kind of what we're, yeah. I think that's good.
I think that's a good plan. That's way, couple of months, it'll be done.
Yep. End of the year, but maybe not, because there's only probably one more meeting for the. Early, early 23rd, first quarter of 23. The goal.
So, so is it our?
Operational goal.
We're going to do it.
Is it our homework then to read through the literature, the research and try to come to the next fallout with the number of, um, goals and strategies?
Yep. I think if you, you know, if you, if you read through it between now and, and maybe before, um, your next meeting, we will distribute a draft that has, um, the inclusion of these and then some more, some more meat on the goals and strategies and key issues. But if you have thoughts between, we've kind of done each of these elements for those of you that are new, we've kind of done it all this way where there's a first kind of spitballing session, then we refine it, send me comments, send me, uh, edit, edits, whatever you want. And then we'll, we'll look at it under a little more of a magnifying glass next month with hopes of having it closer to a presentable kind of condition.
Um, if my memory serves me correct, we really only have a November meeting and we, we just put the calendar in December, just kind of next. So we'll jump from November to January time.
Well, we, we also do have, um, training that. It's been, it's been a while, but traditionally, um, December has been, yeah. Well, December, we, we would typically dedicate that meeting to continuing education. And still have newer members that there's. I don't know how many hours the first orientation is, but I'll, I'll also work between now. Supposed to be done within a year of your appointment, the initiation, not by the end of the calendar year, but usually towards the end of the calendar year, there are opportunities to get that orientation. So. That is, that's also on our list to do before the end of the calendar. Have you ever done it? Years ago? Did you do all of your continuing education every year since?
Done it. But not last.
Not again.
Ten months.
It, they definitely. It definitely stopped happening. COVID, I mean, it was being, it, you know, it was being offered kind of quarterly or, you know, biannually at least. And that, I haven't seen an offering for it for several years. So.
In December, you would ask Mr. Stone for a legal update, um, the code of conduct. Yeah, the code of conduct thing. Well, that was in the seven minutes about doing that at some point. I don't know if it, you know, possibly does at the same time. But he did ask that. So have they, have the attorney here, talk about the code of conduct?
Well.
I've seen the whole presentation.
There's legal briefing and then there's CE. That's, they're different. Are they different?
Yes. And the legal briefing would be the code of conduct. That's what we do typically in the beginning of the year. The continuing education we do at the end of the year. So. Still, we're going to get this off our plate in early 23rd.
Back to school.
They're continuing at all. Anything else? On that? I think we've got good directions. Very useful feedback.
Great start.
Thank you. This is, this is Matt's wheelhouse.
Yeah, just real quick. So we're going to lean build dunes. We'll, we'll work with that in another topic.
We'll make it, we'll, we'll, I think.
Port re nourishment, that's dunes. Health and disaster recovery account. Um, budget large scale drainage improvements, blah, blah. Armor low lying structures was mine, armor low lying roads.
Yep. Coordination.
Mine, Army Corps of Engineers, study others, risk assessment and partnerships.
So what, after arming roads, I had coordination with other local governments. What, I think you had another one in.
I just had risk assessment, study others, risk assessment.
Study other risk assessment.
Which basically what's, they would like, see, the Army Corps of Engineers.
Oh, okay.
The downtown Charleston.
Okay.
Has some, but I think, um, overlaps on what we're talking and working on. And you've looked at Folly, you've looked at Sullivan's, um, on the overall for the resiliency. And then my only other thing was perhaps spelling out resiliency, you know, it's a, it's a.
And, and the introductory.
How, how we define it.
Yeah. And maybe we talked a little bit about how this plan looks at it through the lens of the statute, but maybe that should be spelled out.
Yeah. I can see, yeah, what you were talking about, about economic resilience.
Yeah. And we, it took us a little while to even get kind of our direction on exactly which resilience. We thought we knew, but just wanted to be sure. All right. I think that's good. Ready to move on?
Yes.
So the next, next topic on the agenda is an update on the short-term rental recommendations of implement, implementing a cap. Um, since we last met Sandy, I know, were you, were you at one Steve? We had these listening sessions. Sandy came to at least one, uh, maybe a couple. Yeah. You came, Suzanne was at, at one. Um, so there was a series of three. They were held at the rec center. I believe they're on the city's website. I think that they're hosted there. Um, the city had a kind of group of facilitators that they presented in very, very, uh, at a very high level. Uh, the idea of a cap, idea of short-term rentals being regulated in some way. There was mention kind of of the planning commission's very specific recommendations on a cap, but there, there wasn't a lot of detail given about the, about the planning commission's recommendation, but it was hinted at, and then it was very broad strokes request of the people in attendance of, tell us your feedback on how you feel about short-term rentals, how have they affected you? You know, are they impacting your quality of life? What's the, the main things that they're doing to you? Um. That was kind of question number one. Question.
Impacted positively or negatively by short-term rentals?
Yep. Um, and then kind of, they kind of had, there was maybe two really high level questions like that. A third was, was, do you have a feeling on implementing a cap? Um, and then kind of the final wrap-up question was, if you're a king for the day, what would you do as, as it relates to short-term rentals on the island? So there were three different sessions. I think they were pretty, pretty well attended, all three. I think they were well-run. This team of facilitators kind of ran it well, I thought. And I will say, uh, my, I, I went to all three and listened to, to everything that was said. Um, and I would say that they kind of overwhelmingly, the response was, don't implement a cap. Work to enforce existing ordinances. It's kind of the easy, uh, you know, kind of pull the easy lever and just work with what you got. Um, so that is, that's all that's really happened in terms of an update to give to you at some point, and, and it hasn't been, um, scheduled yet, but at some point, city council will take the issue back up. And I mean, and they're going to have to make a vote either up or down on what they're going to do. So that's still, still in limbo. Um, I think, again, I think the, the workshops were well done. I think, um. So we'll, we'll see. Any questions about that or?
How many people showed up at the third one?
They got slightly less. I think the first one was about 80.
Seventy, forty, ten.
Maybe 30, kind of something like that, wasn't it? Yeah. The, the first one was better attended than the second two, but they still were half full at least. Wasn't good, you know, when you, we don't get, we don't get a hundred and, we don't get a hundred residents involved for much. It, it got them.
So is this the extent?
Well, there will be some, um, there will be some kind of legal, public. There'll be, there would be a public hearing. There's, it kind of now would trigger into the more formal legal, public feedback, like public hearings, like come into this room, stand at the podium, say your piece. But I think that's the, I think that is, um, the end of the.
They said the word retro.
No. Well, probably was said, everything was said. I don't think there's, um, I don't, haven't heard of an appetite to do anything like that. Um, there was, you know, I do know that initially there was talk about if the kind of response is overwhelming, we could continue, you know, we could start, we could go to Wild Dunes, do one there. You know, we could, we could kind of continue going until we felt like anybody who wanted to have a say has had a said, has had a say. So I think though, after those three nights, I think everybody felt comfortable that anybody who wanted to say a piece had their opportunity to do that.
There were a hundred and fifty residents that showed up from small shapes inside.
Yep. Yeah, there was a, yep. Each of, each of them, the facilitator asked that the, because it was not, you know, you, we didn't check IDs to ensure that everybody was a resident. So you did have the, the crowd was made up of residents, um, property owners, and then just otherwise interested. Um, but the facilit.
Vacation rental homeowners and residents.
Yeah.
You have a good mix of representation.
Yeah.
There's at least one person that's a resident.
The show of hands, I would say, assuming that people were uh, being truthful with their show of hands, it was, I would say overwhelmingly residents uh, and not rental owners or vacationers or anything else. But yeah, they kind of got a, a gauge. If you signed up, the plan was to have everybody sign up prior to the meeting. If you signed up, you gave your address, your email, your contact information. So we, we got all of that. Um, if you, if you showed up, you hadn't signed up, Nicole was very sweet and would let you come in, but she would kind of interrogate you about where you lived and. Um, so we, we tried to cap sure as much information as we could about the attendees, but I think overwhelmingly it was, it was, um, residents. Some, I mean, obviously some rental owners, some just interested people. So we'll see where that goes. Um, I, I was a little bit surprised. I mean, I, I I would have assumed that the community would be kind of evenly split, pro-cap. Maybe, you know, a, a different way. I kind of would have thought it would be like fifty-fifty. I would say of the, so there was kind of twelve tables, so thirty, of the thirty groups that were, I would say maybe one or two said our table was, is pro-cap. Or we were pro-cap at my table. So it just wasn't not a lot of positive feelings about a cap for whatever reason. Um, I think there were some people that were, it did come out, I'm pro-cap, but not with, um, not in zones. That was, that was one that came, yeah, just don't do it in zones. So just kind of set a, set a cap and don't try to get into, um, the weeds of where they are and. And I know that comforts Matt in trying to govern, uh, the zones and how many are, how many are in each, is each zone and. So anyway, it, it's been a, it's been, I feel like a good process and we'll, we'll see where, where it goes from here.
Kind of spin back to the original question, did we solve a problem that didn't exist? Which we asked before we got involved.
Well.
I was gonna make that comment when I, I watched the first one. I didn't, hadn't gone back and watched the other two, but it was.
Very similar, I would say.
First one was pretty much, uh, just, it, you know, it's the question of there being a problem, that was what I was kind of wondering about. So I think most of the groups were acknowledging there is an issue, but they thought it could be solved by enforcing our existing ordinances, which came back to why we started this in the first is because our existing ones weren't working.
Right.
What was, was there something else we could do?
Right.
So again, that was just kind of my take on it of.
You know, the police chief himself had said, there's not much he could do to enforce the occupancy. Um, which is, you know, some of the things that we consider problematic. But, uh, so yeah.
I, you know, I personally felt as though just to kind of set a guardrail, we've always been roughly a third, a third, a third, just keep it there. And, you know, it doesn't seem like there's a lot of pressure, kind of the way Kiowa works. There's, there is a line in the sand. It's not being challenged, but it's there as kind of a guardrail. If some economic condition changes overnight and it's all of a sudden, you know, generates a cash flow that it makes it attractive, it could change. So, you know, just my personal, I, but didn't seem to be a lot of.
We've already exceeded the proposed suggested caps.
Yeah.
By just talking about.
Yeah. Got a little bump in revenue from, uh, we're up our highest number ever of rentals. We're six, right at sixteen hundred and.
Yeah. So that's like two hundred more licenses were, uh, issued as a result of our conversation.
So it was a good moneymaker. Nothing less.
Should we add that?
Yeah.
Generate revenue.
Anything, any other questions on that or comments? All right. Ready for the, the big excitement of the year? So I will just tell you kind of, um, I'll just tell you where, where we are today as, as we know the world. Um, the the Wild Dunes plan development, um, started back in the early seventies. The city had entered into an agreement, well, we, we rezoned that property to be a planned residential district in that, um, in that document in the seventies, there is a lot in that document that controls how the resort was to be developed. We have always, uh, recognized that, that in the document, there was an ultimate ceiling of twenty-five hundred residential units and three hundred and fifty in rooms. Um, there has been, it has always been said really that in reality, there's not enough room to get to those caps. There's not enough room to get to those numbers. So that it's, it's a number, it's out there, but in reality, it will never, never really be met. Um, several months ago, uh, there was, there was information circulated and kind of opinion circulated about the change in ownership at, at Wild Dunes Resort Ownership. I think that, I think that change in ownership had something to do with them building the hotel, um, and the, and the cash infused to do that, but I honestly don't know anything about the, the ownership. Um, but there was this kind of idea floated that, hey, we've, we've, we've always rested easy that there wouldn't really be twenty-five hundred, uh, dwellings and three hundred and fifty in rooms. But this new ownership, uh, could be of a mindset to really look to make that happen, one way or another, if the, if, if something were to happen, or they may just have that as a, as a goal to make that happen. So, um, the council, um, looked at that issue and, and was advised in executive session, executive session about the issue, um, and ultimately came out, uh, of an executive session somewhere at the end of last month, somewhere end of September, and they directed the staff to craft and present ordinances that would have the effect of, um, changing, first of all, reducing the, the entitlement numbers down from twenty-five hundred and three fifty down to their current uh, numbers today. So whatever number of units is in Wild Dunes in terms of dwellings and hotel rooms, that would be it. Uh, and that would, that obviously includes created lots, things that have already been approved and are platted and are, are sitting there waiting to be, uh, built. But it would not allow future subdivisions to be built, future hotel structures to be built, things of that nature. Um, so that was, that was one component of what they wanted to do. And the other component of what they wanted to do was to forever lock in the golf courses and the tennis facilities as recreational space and conservation space. So it's kind of a, there's, there's actually five ordinances that are, that are being considered, but really the, there's two concepts. It's locking down those facilities to say there'll always have to be some type of, um, open space or recreation space and lowering the entitlements down to their current numbers as they sit today. So um, came out of that meeting, tasked the staff with doing that and announced the, the um, plan to hold a public hearing and receive comments on this, on this zoning plan. So that was done immediately. Coming out of that, an ad was run, advertised a public hearing, which will be this Tuesday. And it, and it really started the ball rolling, um, in terms of giving the city the ability um, to pause and really look at, at what, um, what should happen in Wild Dunes. So that's, that is what's happened kind of conceptually. I will tell you from the mechanics of, of how zoning, uh, changes work, there are a number of procedural things that will have to happen. Um, there's, there was a first reading last night. It, it passed eight to one last night. There has to be, uh, a public hearing. That public hearing is scheduled for next Tuesday. Um, and the planning commission as part of the, part of how zoning amendments are made, the planning commission has to, well, you don't have to, but you are tasked with giving a recommendation. Um, and if before they, before they, uh, vote on ratifying the ordinance. So kind of procedurally, that will happen. I do suspect that, and it was announced last night, that once the public hearing is held, um, I think there is an intention to go for the council and, and however this is to happen, to go to the ownership group and just talk about, you know, truly what are your plans? These ordinances kind of lock it down to zero, but you know, they, they have not indicated an unwillingness to negotiate something away from that. So I think that there will be a little bit of a pause after those procedural steps happen with the public hearing and first reading. Uh, and during that time, this group, I suspect at your, at your next meeting, and it, it will kind of be at your next meeting, will, um, look at the actual maps, the ordinances uh, and the concepts in those and make a recommendation back to city council. So all of this is brand new. Literally the, the vote took place maybe twenty hours ago to start the ball rolling. So I, I didn't really want to have you all, um, having consideration of things twenty hours later in this room, uh, quite frankly, wouldn't have been proper to do that because it, this agenda's been out and this pack has been out since last week. So um, happy to, happy to answer questions really. I mean, I would say about the concept, the procedure going forward, but, um, the consideration and recommendation wouldn't be, wouldn't be until your next meeting.
How many, how many rooms are currently existing?
It's right at three hundred. Um, one of the ordinances, and I think I've emailed them.
Well, three hundred and fifty.
Three hundred and fifty are allowed, right at three hundred are built.
Of the twenty-five hundred, right? The twenty-five hundred or twenty-two hundred?
Twenty-five hundred are allowed. I'm gonna pull up.
It's, there's currently two hundred and ninety-seven in rooms.
Two ninety-seven, yes. So right at three hundred in rooms built.
Yeah.
So they, they would have fifty-three more in rooms that they could build before they hit.
Three hundred and fifty condos or.
Dwellings.
So did all this start up because of request by the owners of the hotel or?
No, no, this was, this was just concern resident or residents brought, have been kind of been kind of making the rounds, uh, at various public meetings. I guess, you know, explaining their concern that this could happen.
I mean, the rumors out there, like everything else are, I mean, you're inundated with them about tearing down the two clubhouses, putting condos up there, which probably would be good for, because the locker rooms are awful. But you hear a lot of rumors about destroying one of the golf courses, which Sandy told me in the past that you can't do that because it's I can't remember what term you used, Sandy.
They actually have a conservancy within the gates.
There's an open space requirement.
That dictates that they must have, well, they're utilizing the golf courses to meet that open space requirement. But the outside harbor course, what are there, eight holes out there along, you know, across the waterway is zoned, uh, RS.
SR one, right.
SR one, residential. Um, but I don't know how you pick that out of your picture and develop it, um, and, and still keep the club running. I don't think that's a reality.
Yeah, there, there have been, you know, and Sandy is correct. There is already a provision in the existing document that locks in a certain acreage of open space. And they can't comply with that provision and do away with the golf courses. They also kind of related, but, but different. They also, the, the sewage that is collected uh, in Wild Dunes goes into a holding pond, isn't it? And then is used uh, as irrigation on those golf courses. And they have to have that system by the health department's requirements to operate their sewage facility. So by several different standards, we feel as though at least the golf courses inside Wild Dunes are already very well protected. Um, you know, there, there are kind of theories or rumors as to how you could skinny up some holes, how you could kind of shorten up a few holes and maybe still get in a unit here, a unit there, twenty here, twenty there. Lot of, you know, a lot of guesswork as to what could be done creatively to, to get more units out of there, but Sandy's correct, that the portion outside of Wild Dunes along the backside of Waterway Boulevard is, is not part of that, that, um, de-HEC permit on uh, irrigation and it's, it's not part of the open space, uh, required by the, uh, the PRD. So it's, and it's just residentially zoned. Um, so it would appear to be an easier target if they were to want to develop something.
Okay, but this is not coming from the hotel owners.
No. No, and in fact, they're, I'm sure they're not gonna be pleased about it.
I mean, they took out, they took out a bunch of tennis courts, which I don't think has changed the number of people who play tennis, but I think that was kind of your shot over the bow.
That may have been. That may have been kind of what, you know, the, the upset the. Go ahead.
I think the grant scheme things were only looking at fourteen percent of their property to rezone, right?
I have not done.
I mean, it's like sixteen hundred acres and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Wild Dunes is about sixteen hundred. And we're looking at about two hundred and thirty-six, thirty-seven acres.
Sounds about right.
But for the area outside of the gates, you know, the, the eight holes on the harbor course is owned SR one, that's one contiguous lot, so.
Might be, might be a couple. Yeah.
Or a few, but they would need to have subdivisions drawn and mapped. Or a few, but they would need to have subdivisions drawn and mapped and approved by the planning commission, which while they're all would be, I'm sure legally, um, subdivided, subdividable properties, there could be resistance from the community to reject the subdivision. Because it doesn't conform to the comprehensive plan of less traffic or anything like that.
Could be resistance, but.
But yeah, I mean, day one, twenty years ago, when, when I was on this board.
It complies with the, I mean, you'd, you'd have to see an area at which it didn't comply to, I think legally not approve that subdivision. You know, to kind of build on that point, you will, and if you look at the, if you look at the topography of the land, very skinny, obviously shaped like a long golf hole with marsh around it. Um, the SR one district requires, you'll recall after, uh, a subdivision, maybe a year, two years ago, the lot size requirement for SR one was doubled to almost an acre of highland. So it's not, it's not, uh, a tremendous number of units that they, they, so they couldn't go out there today and build, um, condos or, you know, high density residential development. Even under today's zoning, it would be a very low, um, you know, it would be maybe ten units in that, in that section. So it's a very low density zoning today outside of those, outside of Wild Dunes gates.
That golf course is almost a mile long.
Waterway from forty-first?
Down to my house on Ensign Court. It's almost, it's just under a mile. I think it's just.
More than.
Forty minutes in there and the, and the load system and an acreage each.
Suzanne may have the math, the acreage. My.
But anyway, um, I, um, I hope that, uh, cooler minds will prevail on this thing and that they will negotiate some reasonable. This is what they're talking about. Could be, I don't see them building three-hundred-and-fifty condos now. See them, I can, I can see them putting out fifty-three, fifty units in somewhere. Does that come, convention center, the sweetgrass center, get rid of that down, oh, there's a bell right there, fifty units.
I see if there's an opportunity to make money, that's their goal. If you can find anything over there, it's kind of been the way that that progressed.
And this, uh, investor bought it with that in mind. He has the right right now to do that, the way the zoning is. Um, so you're going to.
He does.
You know, we're going to, the city take that away from him after he's bought that, the property to do that with.
Is it a right?
Oh, it absolutely is.
I mean, because you can change the zoning at any time, especially to fit like in our case, the property.
I'm not arguing that. I'm saying right now he has the right to do it. Obviously, he doesn't have plans. There's nothing in the, no, it's not.
It's not vested.
Not the way a lot of people were painting that picture.
Well, the, so according to the original numbers, you'd have, they, they could put an additional fifty-three rooms in somewhere.
Hotel rooms, correct.
Yeah. So I mean, if they want to build something where Hueys is or build something where the harbor course check-in is, they have that plenty of room, especially now, especially, well, there is no driving range. So that's kind of worth it.
Three acres down that.
Well, that was, if they want to put something in there. Uh, so fifty-three rooms is not that many.
Right.
If you're building a.
Little small hotel.
Six, yeah.
We'll add a hundred condos in that fifty-three unit, you know, condo town.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I think.
That's gonna do wonders for traffic. That would be great.
Well, it's the traffic. The density of the property in Wild Dunes.
But I had a question really was, if it comes to us for a review, our basically review is, does that conform with the comprehensive plan, right?
I, I think.
That's, I mean, that's why we're looking at it is.
Yes.
Is it?
That, that would be my, my, uh, recommendation to you all at, the lens to look at it through would be, how does it, how does this rezoning fit in to the comprehensive plan of the city? Is it?
To meet our, our goals and stuff in the comprehensive plan?
Exactly.
So is there anything written? Is there, is there a plan written somewhere that we can look at?
The comprehensive plan? Yes. Yeah, that, yeah, well, well, so you all have in, just in your last few months, received piecemeal and you're seeing it in edited format, which it's obviously hasn't been approved in its edited format. So between now and then, I'll circulate the clean copy that has all of the, um, all of the comprehensive plan in it.
So we'll just wanna, gonna be ridiculous with this. Don't, don't shoot the messenger. Um, how many vacant lots are there remaining on the Isle of Poms?
On, um, I do have a guess, but it's not at my fingertips right now. And I think I have it some, I actually think I have.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's about fifty and I think about half of them are in Wild Dunes.
So to meet the comprehensive pa, plan, should we demand and change the zoning on those fifty lots? That they become green space and only dedicated to growing trees?
Well, wait, what do you mean? Are you talking about lots where homes were, were torn down or lots?
Vacant lots that have never been developed.
Never been built on.
Yeah, I thought the number was closer to ninety, but.
I was thinking about seventy.
No, I understand what you're saying though.
Yeah.
About any difference than restricting any vacant lot, all vacant lot.
I think that's the discussion. I think what, again, not saying, saying this is my position, but those developing an inn or condos may have other ramifications than, other than the single kind of residence, like parking, like eight hundred employees, like other traffic. I think all of those then have to get matched. I'm not agreeing or disagreeing.
No, no.
That's, you know, listening to the caller, you know, there's already eight hundred and fifty employees that work at the inn, at the resort. Another two or three hundred, you can only park so far down Palm Boulevard.
No, that's the.
No, just taking another tennis court, yeah.
Right. But I think those are the things that would come into the discussion.
I have one other question for you, Doug.
Yes.
Why would the rec center not be considered part of the conservation if we were rezoning?
The rec center's government is city private.
It is, but, uh, it's residentially zoned currently.
Yeah, but if we were creating a recrea, recreational conservative zone, I'm not sure why we wouldn't go ahead and
join that in there.
Join that in there. Because again, this is kind of to predict that we don't know what's gonna happen in the future. And we're trying to preserve them.
Ball fields, I mean the.
Parking lots.
Certainly the, um.
Well, that's owned by the city as opposed to Wild Dunes.
But I think David's point is it, it would be a consistent use for that district if we have this district and, and I guess.
And it also doesn't look like you're targeting towards any, it's.
But we are.
The front, yeah, I mean, properties are rezoned all the time, but, you know, like a position I held many years ago about short-term rentals, there are people that have invested in properties and developed them in a manner that shouldn't take away that ability to use their rental license, that they're really SOL. Maybe feel a little less, uh, sympathetic to corporations, but, uh, but my concern really is just Palm Boulevard and somehow Mount Pleasant, if somebody were to night, want to do a nice development like that, they'd get you to build the highway.
Right.
You know, uh, they, they'd, they'd make you widen Palm Boulevard or build another lane on the bridge.
Absolutely. There've been many projects like that. When you're the developer, you gotta improve the infrastructure.
Right.
Absolutely.
Because it's, you know, I thought we should have tried that with the, the last end, but, um, but you know, it's, you know, our government, our town, city government plays by rules and, and not like some of our neighbors that do anything until they're challenged.
As far as the follow-up to what he just said, so even, even just hypothetical again. So if this goes through and, and the golf course, especially stuff outside the gate goes from SR one to a conservation, it doesn't prevent them in the future coming back and saying, I want to rezone it again, but they would have to go through the normal.
That's correct. That's correct.
And then we would have arguably more say in what happens. We could say, yes, you can redevelop that. We want a new road or we want a new bridge.
That's correct.
They could rezone it even from the conservation in the future.
That's correct. So that gives you enough food for thought for next month?
They work races.
So the one last thought I had when I started reading, um, the, if I had suggested changes to it, zoning, um, was how exposed are we as a planning commission legally? Because I can see this going through a long, drawn-out legal process. And to that end, I'm wondering, should we have, um, some legal counsel advise us on the zoning, rezoning process?
If, if you'd like that, um, I can, I can ask that they be here. I, you know, I could just tell you that the city council is, has been frequently advised, um, about, you know, the legalities of rezoning and what, what rights are vested, when ordinances are pending, you know, all of those type of technicalities. But if you all would like to have, um, legal representation here, they won't give you advice outside of, you know, an open session. It would be in an executive session. But if, if that's the will of the group, can certainly do that. I, I personally, I think that, you know, the, you all are an advisory group. If there is, if there's any type of, uh, recourse, legal recourse, which there could very well be, it will be at the city council. It won't be, um, you know, the expectation is that is the group, that is the group changing the policy, changing the zoning, uh, taking those actual votes. So I think you can rest assured that they'll be, you know, on sound legal footing with whatever they do.
And if we choose, and if we choose not to make a recommendation, it goes forward anyway.
That's correct. Yeah.
Recommendation is the same as an approval. So if we just say, if we're silent, if we hear all this information, we go through months of this.
And you don't make a recommendation.
It doesn't matter.
Well, they would see it as basically a recommendation to approve it.
Well, they would. I'm not sure I would.
Yeah. I think, I think either the state statute or. I think our ordinance says that, I think.
It, that, that, it does, yeah.
Says it's a, a recommendation to approve, correct? Yeah. Yeah.
You don't, you don't need indemnification coverage unless you're actually making a decision.
And we're not.
We're making a recommendation.
Correct.
That's it.
That's the way I would think about it.
So I'll restate my concern.
I think I should.
Isn't that, it's the formal zoning, rezoning process. I'd like to understand the legal and I, I think you're well-versed. Um, but I'm asking for kind of a legal advice on.
Yeah, be.
Zoning and rezoning, not, am I gonna get sued because I said on planning commissioner recommended something?
Yeah.
That's not what I'm asking.
I don't, I don't think there's any problem doing that.
Okay.
Will you, everybody, anybody have an issue with that? Well, I'll ask that when we'll put an executive session on the next agenda, allow you to have some legal advice. All right, that's enough excitement for this group. And one other, one other comment or, or question, I guess, for you. Uh, we have, we do not have public comment section on the agenda. It just says, if you want to make a comment, um, submit to Nicole by the day prior. This could be one of those issues. I mean, it was, it was, it was out the door, uh, last night.
They're gonna burn down City Hall.
Do you all, would you like to add public comment or would, do you want to keep it the way it is? What do you, what would you like? I mean, I feel sure if you put it on the agenda, that there would be, uh, plenty of interested people here to talk, but I think that's up to you all. That I can tell you, the council is getting, is gonna get plenty of comment. So it's completely a, it's up to you all. If you want to continue as you always have, just take it electronically. Uh, or if you want to have a part of your agenda that dedicates hearing from the public.
Because we're not a decision-making body, I don't think we really.
Yeah, okay. And different cities do it differently. Our code specifically has council hold those public hearings. So, I mean, I think that's in keeping. Your kind of thought is in keeping with how the ordinances are put together for the city. So I think that's fine, but, um, just wanted to see, didn't want me to tell people that and then the, the commission feel like, well, you should have put them all on the agenda. I'm not seeing anybody re, re, kind of going against the idea of keeping it like you've always done. Keep consistent.
Yeah, because it would just go on for hours and same, the same people.
You can always, I mean, if people randomly showed up, you can change the agenda to allow for that and, and, and have them submit to the same rules that they do at city council. Three minutes, thirty minutes total for the, for everybody and that's the end of that. So. I have zero problem telling people that. Wrap it up. I have to do it. It's my job.
Yep.
If she didn't, it would.
You do it so polite.
It would go on.
Motion to adjourn if we're at that point.
Anything else? I think, I don't have anything unless you all have questions.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion please, sir.
Yeah.
Okay. There's no discussing that.